Morning, everybody.
Morning.
It is November the 18th, 2025. It's about five minutes after nine. We have a regular meeting, Liberty County Commissioners Court. Let the record show that all the commissioners are present today, so we do have a quorum established, and we have business before the court. So if you would, please, let's all rise and leave you ladies in the pledges.
Yes, sir. Please face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please face the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
And if y'all would pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for each and every day that you get us up, we get to put our feet on the ground, and Lord, hopefully, we all hit our knees first and give you thanks for all your wonderful blessings, your guidance, Lord, your knowledge you share with us, and the love you share. Lord, please be with us as we go through this meeting today, and especially, Lord, as we enter into the holiday season with Thanksgiving coming, and then the birth of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ coming at Christmas time. Lord, we please ask you to be with all of our first responders, especially our firemen right now, Lord, they've, we do have a burn band, and I pray that you watch over them. Lord, please be with the folks that are sick, that need help, the folks that are needy, that need, may their, may their needs be met. And, Lord, for all things, please forgive us for our many sins. We ask these things in Jesus' most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Notices and proclamations. Don't believe we have any today. At least I have not seen any today, so we'll move on to next item up. Lee, we have three folks that would like to speak in public comment, and you're one of them.
Yes.
I'll tell you what, let's, let's get Mr. Isador Cavareta. Isador, yeah, if you would, please. You live in 575 County Road 2255 in Cleveland, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, please come on up here and visit with us. That way, we can hear you, and we can see you. And, uh, you have some questions about Cunningham Acres?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, next three minutes, it's yours. Thank you.
My name is Isador Cavareta, and I appear before you today to formally present my request regarding two lots along County Road 2269, specifically within the 40, 140-foot straight section of road at the curve on 2269. In order to proceed with development on these lots, it's necessary for the county to officially name the roadway or assign appropriate road numbers. I have made multiple attempts to address this matter with Ms. Soliday at the permit office in person, contacted her by email, as well as written correspondence. Despite these efforts, I have not received a response, resolution, or, and the issue remains outstanding. Ms. Soliday has indicated that the lots in question do not meet the minimum requirements for construction, and as a result, road numbers cannot be assigned in building permits on the issue. I respectfully disagree with this determination. I have previously constructed more than 25 houses along this roadway, 2269, on the same roadway on properties of identical size and characteristics within the area historically known as Cunningham Acres. The Cunningham Acres survey was completed and recorded in 1962 by James Johnson Professional Land Survey. Furthermore, the Texas Administrative Code, Section 285.4 explicitly recognized that the 15 small lots subdivided prior to January 1, 1888, are considered compliant with current requirements. The lots in question fall within this category, and therefore should be eligible for development. And the insurance of road numbers and permits, I have packets which include the information supporting my request, and would appreciate any help you can give me to resolve this matter. This has come up twice since 2005. Boone Reeves, another familiar with, has been familiar with Cunningham Acres, got it set up, made a phone call and got it set up. And then in 2024, when I was going to build two more houses, after I built two more, and I had four houses on this one lot, one, five lots, I could do four houses. I can't build on the fifth one because it's next to the creek. It came up again, and David Blum, they started the, my, that big man since 2005, his wife does the permits, and so they stopped me in 2024. He presented the survey, everything was good. I got the permits and built two more houses, and now I stand still. I have four more lots, and I'd like to complete the four more lots in my lifetime. So that's my goal. I appreciate it.
Mighty fine. Thank you for coming to see us. Of course, we can't answer you now because it's not a, because of the agenda. Okay. Next, on the public participation, Lee Chambers. And we're going to talk about the special call meeting on Friday, November 21st, considering holiday lighting.
Holiday lighting. One, as you all know, I work on elections, and so I'm here very late at night, and I've been watching and observing what they're doing with the lights in Liberty program next door and around the town. And what became very obvious is that the courthouse seems to be a very dark center of all of that. And so we brought it up before and said, well, why don't, you know, because the cost is very cost prohibitive. And we have, you know, a lot of issues right now in the county, and, but we brought up the idea of possibly getting donations to cover this. So what we're pursuing now is a program where we can put lights in the trees and around the courthouse. I think the one over on the northeast corner with the, the Canon, yeah, is going to look especially gorgeous. We can get these done in a hurry if we approve them on Friday. And I think it's going to add tremendously to the program, and it's going to make our courthouse look beautiful. And what I'd like to do is have Col and Carrie Sockcheck come up. They're from Earthscapes. They've been doing the lighting, if you've seen it already, for FLB and for the city. They've been very involved in wrapping the trees and doing all of this. We've gotten some other vendors that have offered to give us some help and free donations to help set it up. And then what we would like to do is get the press to help us solicit donations from companies, people, got a lot of people running for office, and possibly the Commissioners Court could do a proclamation at some point. You know what I'm talking about. A proclamation recognizing these people at some point for their donations to the beautification of our courthouse for the Christmas program. If you want to visualize it, what, the one I like the best is they said it's going to be like a little Christmas Hallmark movie in a small town, and I think it will be. I think it's going to be really beautiful. They've got a lot of events planned. There's going to be a lot of people coming to the town to see them, and I think it will be wonderful if we can make our courthouse kind of match up and look beautiful like the rest of the City of Liberty. So I'd like to ask, Carrie, yes, Carrie, please come up and tell them a little bit about what you're planning on doing to the courthouse, and, and then we will take it up for, you know, for voting purposes on Friday.
Well, as you guys know, I am Carrie Sockcheck with Earthscapes of Texas and Christmas Connections. We recently opened a retail store here on St. Houston Street, so hopefully you guys have got a chance to come by. If you haven't, please come see us. So obviously, yes, we believe in Christmas, and we believe in the joy of Christmas. The cool thing about Christmas lights is that from zero to 100, everybody loves Christmas lights. There is never a person that we've ever met that says, I just don't like Christmas lights. And then I hang in there, and that's when we come into play. So obviously, we've done this for several, several years. We are a professional company. We are insured, so we have a lot of experience. We were able to do the city this year. We do First Liberty Bank. We have almost 200 customers here in the county, so, and on that, yes, and we can't base financial decisions for the county on just warm, fuzzy feelings, but most importantly, the one thing that we need to spend this on is to, that this is revenue for our county. We hosted on St. Houston Street, a couple of vendors, our retailers and I, hosted the Mistletoe Walk. My sales that day alone increased about 150% just from one day on a Saturday. It was a Christmas thing. We showed it on the street. The city was nice enough to let us do that, and, but it just goes to show that it is literally a revenue generator. And like I said, everybody loves it. So you cannot disappoint people. Yes, I know this is taxpayers' money. It's also my money, too, so I have a vested interest in it as well, so, but I do not think we can go wrong, especially with the city doing what they've done. I think the county partnering is just going to bring out bigger groups of people, and bigger groups of people just means that we're revenue for our county and our city, and I think that we desperately need that. And yes, there's a lot of photo opportunities for the teenagers. They all love that, and like I said, from zero to 100, nobody just likes the Christmas lights. So on what you had said earlier, we have it right now proposed, there's six live oaks that we would be lighting up, as well as the, and it's...
The west side of the building.
The west side of the building.
Is it just lighting lights?
Yes, and so they'll be wrapped, the tree trunks will be wrapped, much like anybody's gotten a sneak peek. Hopefully, y'all have seen it, but tonight is the official lighting, so if you haven't seen it, it's absolutely breathtaking. But you have seen First Liberty Bank, so, and the trees at the courthouse are just amazingly, or, you know, ornate in their, obviously, grounds and stuff, so it'll be more impactful than anything about First Liberty. We do appreciate their, their alignment to this city and county improvement. So again, if there's any specific questions, I'd go over.
Well, I've discussed the fact that the proposal includes purchasing the lights, which we will continue to own, and so in ongoing years, we will have the lights, and it'll just be a matter of putting them up and taking them down. So the initial purchase is a little high, but that means purchasing the lights. And then once we have those, it won't be as budget in ongoing years.
Correct.
But that's why I want to solicit donations to help us purchase the lights, and we're trying to get as much help for free as we can to, to give them up and all that.
Yes, and with that, it includes the maintenance, the storage, the installation, the take downs, which is literally, yep, you just write us a check, we take care of everything. We do maintain them throughout the season as well, and then next year, and consecutive years, the same thing as well. So the prices will obviously be increasing the next two or three years significantly. So, yeah, I think it's a great addition to the county. I do not think we will be disappointed, and I'm sure it might be a little pushback, but hopefully we can get donations for it. But I do not, I think this is the wise investment for the, for the county.
The biggest dispense by far is purchasing the lights, and that's what we'd like some assistance with, from the public and our vendors, and hopefully maybe some people who'd like to get their name up there.
I'm going to go check those poll statuses right now and see if I can link you to the polls.
So, so, but if we can do that, I think we can make this place, you know, gorgeous, and I think the public will love it, and they'll be walking around and checking out the courthouse, and it'll be a great, get us a lot of publicity. You know, most cities have a main lighting program. Zoo lights in Houston, Zucker Park in Austin, I think, and those are very high-tech. This is more, I think it's cozy. It's a small town. It's going to be beautiful, and I hope everyone will get out and come see it, and visit us and check it out. But we do need to get the lights and get it going, and get it going quickly, so.
All right, Kim.
Putting out the proposal now, we'll take another one Friday, for real, for voting purposes. In the meantime, if you need to contact the Sockchecks, their, their phone number's there. We've got their information, and you're welcome to talk to them about their proposal, and any ideas or changes you might want to do, and bring up on Friday. So that's what I wanted to put out to the court today.
Okay, all right, we'll cross that bridge on Friday.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Col. All righty. And as you know, we can't discuss this, so we'll move right along to conflicts of interest. Everybody good? Bruce, you have any conflicts today? Okay, all right. Move on down to the consent agenda. Y'all all have the opportunity to look at it. Dwayne, are there any add-ons today? Kim, you have any add-ons?
I did.
Okay.
I only got the two from Dwayne.
Get it sent to you later.
Good.
Do I get, do you need copy one?
Yeah.
Okay, give us the line.
This is ones to correct the budget numbers on their new district law. It's actually a transfer of $35,000 in road material from Precinct 2 to $35,000 to capital outlay of Precinct 3. Another one is the school ISD, resource officers, school pays us money to buy the uniforms. We've got in total $8,000 in increase in the uniform budget for Precinct 2, cost $2,000 for Sheriff's Department, one increase to $1,000, another increase to $4,000, and another increase.
Okay. Kim?
Yes, sir. I have a payoff to Mr. Mark Bomeo for $2,612.84 for vacation pay.
Two, six, one, two, eight, four?
Yes.
That all add-on?
I believe it is.
For the consent agenda, with the add-on and the changes with Precinct 1, Precinct 2, with the one mention.
Precinct 2 to Precinct 3.
If you've got Precinct 1 on the, okay.
Change that. I'll say that.
All right, we got a motion from Greg. Second from Bruce, with clarifications and additions. Any further discussion?
Your Honor, I'd like to ask if someone is, can answer this question, Dave. In item number seven of the audits, could you, could someone please decipher the Swain, Brentson Associates No Opinion on their audit of ESD number three?
It's a compilation report. It's not, it's not an audit report. They gather the accounting information from ESD number three, and they present it in a financial statement format. It's not like a regular audit, where they test the expenditures, and, it's basically, they just prepare financial statements.
Okay. Sort of compilation. So one of the, one of the comments in there says there's missing information that's required by Government Accounting Standards Board. That's, that's...
When we do, when they do, when we do an audit, a lot more information is required. I mean, to comply with GASB pronouncements, and, and with a compilation, that stuff just isn't required. I mean, like, like, for instance, we have to get OPEA evaluations, you know, our health insurance, everything has to be standards, and basically what they're doing, they just, they're giving the firm the checkbook, and they're making a financial statement. They're not looking at invoices and testing for curls of the funds.
So this is one of the things required for our, our contributions to the ESD. Is that correct?
It's a financial statement, but it's not an audit of financial statement.
Okay. But again, it's something that we're requiring everybody to do, to then receive county funding.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, have motion from Greg, second from Bruce, no further discussion. Call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Regular agenda, number eight for me, is information item, of course, from Sheriff Rader on the continuing repairs of Liberty County Jail.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Dick. The fire restoration there at the Far West Hall, as soon as, it's almost complete, as soon as we have a window and door for the Zoom room, that Nick will talk about in a little bit, and exterior door for the vestibule, that will be done in the Far West Hall. As far as the West Hall, the expanded metal installation is on hold right now until we get the HVAC system done. Stephanie's been working very hard. We've got a PO, and as soon as we get the payment and we get the bonds in, they're supposed to be in today, then they can do the notice to proceed, and we'll get that done, and then the, they could do the expanded metal. As far as the door locks, intercom system, that'll be started back work in the second week of December to finish that up. The fire hose installation, we got the hoses in, but now we're waiting on some adapters. So many two adapters, as soon as they get in, we'll get those, and that'll be installed. And general maintenance activities that our people are doing, the book-in shower, they had to dig up the floor because they had a collapsed pipe. That's the fifth time that we've had a collapsed pipe at the jail this year. They've repaired the toilets, the sinks, the showers, the doors A and B, and they're all fully functioning. The Sheetrock repairs to the kitchen ceiling due to water damage from the HVAC system have them done, and they've repainted the dress-up room, detox one and the dorm one. So, thank you all.
Okay.
In your last reports, you were reluctant to give us an end date. Are you still so because the HVAC company has not mobilized yet?
Correct. And so they haven't given us a completion date yet.
Okay, so that, is that something that we're pursuing as a, you know, a start date and an end date?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm glad you're looking at her because she's handling.
Yeah, she should. That's good. Thank you, Stephanie. Well, you know, I asked her a lot of questions about the contract.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. She needed more back.
Okay, we need to move to accept someone.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Motion from Gerald. Second from Greg. It's a motion to accept. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 2, 82 for me, is consider and approve the execution of general and no litigation certificate for Southeast Texas Housing Finance Corporation in triplicate. And this is, we do this every year, so just asking that you would consider to continue.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce.
Sorry.
Second from Greg. Any discussion?
Could, could you explain it to me just in a little more detail, what, you know, what the purpose of this is? And, and it appears he's a, I don't know if it's just the way the wording is, but it says La Porte Seville Apartments?
Since it's legal question, I'm gonna let Matthew handle the load on that.
I didn't know it was a legal question.
No, it is. I, I've looked at these in the past, and honestly, it's been so long since I've looked at them new, but I, I've never had an issue with them in the past. I'm sure I have no issue with them here, but if you want detailed explanation, I can...
I'm just saying, what specifically are we doing here? What are we here to approve?
What we're approving as one of the counties within the Texas Housing Finance Corporation, that there's no litigation against the Housing Finance Corporation, so that they can go out for bonds for, or, or other financing for, for their housing project. And it, and it's per project, so that one's for the one you just mentioned.
So every county has to do this?
Who's a part of it.
Oh, okay, okay, because man, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah, yeah, so if you're within a, you know, a large metroplex, then there's probably a Housing Finance Corporation of sufficient size that would require participation amongst several of us.
Okay. All right, thank you, Matthew.
All right. We have a motion from Bruce, saving Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. Motion carries, gentlemen. Number 83 for Mr. Dennis over in the IT department. We have platinum copiers, master contract additions. It's copies for the Northwest Annex, Sheriff's Office copier, $199.19 a month, and permits and engineering copier, $199.19 a month. Boy, y'all worked that deal out, didn't you?
Yeah, it's just to get copiers up at our new building up at the Northwest Annex, so they have the ability to print and do all the things they need for day-to-day operations.
What is a normal copier cost? What does a copier like this cost?
The total price of it, I mean, anywhere can range from eight to 10, give or take, if you look at the full payout price. I can try to find you the exact figures on that.
I just want to make it seem like every Commissioners Court, we have more copiers.
We keep getting more buildings.
Two hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, I understand that, I know. It just, we keep expanding, and it just keeps growing with us.
Are we, when we're replacing it, are we dropping money that we had been leasing before?
Oh, and so when, let's say, so these are all new, because this is a brand-new building, so this would be a new setup, but if we're replacing any copiers that we've already paid off and stuff, we worked it out where the county, we paid for it, so we hold on to it. Now, where we store that, or what we're going to do with that, may go to auction, may sell it, not sure yet, but we keep the old off-lease copiers that we, we purchased in the past.
Since they're not serviced, they're more or less junk.
Pretty much, paperweights.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Was that Bruce?
Bruce and David.
Thank you, okay. I heard David that time. Thank you, David. Got a motion from Bruce, saving David. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Not, not for you. I'm going to look at Dwayne. So do we have these operating costs for this new Northwest Annex in this 26 budget? Is, are these dollars accounted for in the budget? Is this an budget addition?
Hey, we tried to put a little bit of discussion in there, but is this budget ordered out of the loop in there for the copiers to know? Just something, it's just something that we cover during the year. We have a contingency fund that we have to cover things like this that come up. I didn't have no idea how much copier expenses are going to be for the Northwest Annex.
How much money, how much contingency money do you have for Precinct 4? I'm sorry, I'll take that back. Okay, you answered the question. There is some contingency in this budget that will cover it, so we're not dipping...
To a certain extent.
I understand, I understand. Okay, thank you.
4.1 billion there out there for you.
Oh, no, no, no.
I didn't mean to mention that. All right, we got a motion from Bruce, saving from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number 84 for Mr. Dennis. Video magistrate software for jail magistrations. Nick, I'll let you explain all this.
Okay, so Sheriff had reached out to me. Apparently, there was a change with the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals that made a ruling in Texas basically that jail magistration has to be livestreamed. All right, so we have to do it. Our previous setup that we had before the jail had its issue, we lost our Zoom room. Zoom is kind of similar to what we have right now, right? We just tie in. County Court of Law 1 and County Court of Law 2 were utilizing that to do inmate arraignment, stuff like that, that they needed from the corporates. Well, the JPs still needed to go physically into the jail and do everything. Well, there's no telecommute, telecommunications setup in there. There's no way to livestream it, there's nothing. So Sheriff reached out to me, and I started reaching out to other counties. Everybody kind of kept saying, hey, we're using this video magistrate software. It does everything we need to do. Basically, what it does is it's a web-based conferencing, video conferencing software. Each JP would be assigned a user account or a license. It allows them to perform all their duties either in person or away from an internet-connected device, laptop, cell phone, whatever you need. There's video session recording. It's designed specifically just for the judicial use of this. There's all the forms that they currently do in person. They currently, what they can do is they will take your current forms, digitalize them, and use like a, like a rider, an electronic signature pad, and they can correspond that way. It's C G S, it's C G S compatible. It's compatible with that. We already have all the equipment needed for all this in the I T department. I already have it. I have a temporary setup that we just implemented in another area of the jail so we can get Zoom going back up. But this will be specifically for the JPs due to this new ruling. So this was the cost-effective way I could find this type of software that offered all these things that they would need to use. Now, there may be a little bit of just training on showing them how to use it and just getting the jail con up to speed. But this is just kind of finding a solution for a problem we have. You know, that's kind of where I'm at with that.
Remind me, is this a jail commission ruling or is it a legislative?
Judicial. It was a judicial ruling.
Okay.
Yeah. So we're responding to a court ruling and so we found we're not in compliance so that we don't.
A lot of other counties had to scramble as well, because I believe this went live on one line. So a lot of people, not in the same situation. They don't have anything set up for this.
It makes it viewable by the public.
Yes.
And more and more things that we're doing.
Have to be.
As we have elections, have to be viewable by the public at all times. So this is more and more of that.
So another unfunded mandate.
Yes.
Yes. Unfortunately.
Okay, then the question then goes to Dwayne. You didn't fund, you didn't fund this through the jail, I know. And this is gonna be a recurring cost, so that's, it's gonna be one of our first.
And no one, line item budgets. And no one likes to be locked into software requirements. But we could pile with this for a year and see how it goes. There's no, you know, you lock in for twelve months. If it works and functions the way we do, great. If not, I'm always gonna try to figure out a way to make this work. This is just the best option I could find. Checks all the boxes. Yeah. I don't know. J P technology.
You wanna turn your microphone, Dwayne?
If we gotta do it, we gotta do it. But I'll just say this, there's no dark link, I mean, just facts. We currently in this year's budget, we have one point three million dollars budgeted for software.
Okay. All right.
And that number now is gonna be one point three.
And it's eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty million extra. So, I mean, this is mandated. We gotta do it.
Right.
Sometimes, sometimes there's a cost-benefit analysis on software, I believe. I mean, is, you get a certain cost, you get the benefit out of it.
Okay.
Like with the J P technology, kind of the dress-up anyway?
Possibly. Possibly. But we'd have, we'd have to look at it. I mean, you know, the JPs, they use it to supplement their budget, so.
Make a motion to approve. All right, got a motion from Bruce to approve.
I'll second, yeah.
Second from Gerald.
Yes, sir.
I don't remember who's on your jail committee, but they might want to consider the rooms and the ability to make this work in our new jail. It's a little crappy over there, but what your building should absolutely accommodate these magistration hearings that are remote and all of that.
Absolutely.
I'm sure they will be. That's why you sit with an architect and tell him what you want to do. All right.
Thank you all.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Discussion's complete, I do believe. Call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Moving right along to eight-five from Commissioner Arthur. Consider and approve the interlocal agreement between Liberty County and Hardin Independent School District to provide mutual services to the public at a reduced expense by avoiding duplication of equipment, manpower, and other resources. Interlocal agreement there, Greg?
Yeah, I just redo a little stat.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from David.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion?
I have a question for the department. Do we have interlocals with all the school districts in the county?
Not all of them, no.
I have them with my district right there, because occasionally they will ask us to give evaluation or something.
Okay. So we, you have one with Tarkington as well?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'm not familiar. I don't, I don't think I have one, or it hasn't come up.
You did.
And historically, I haven't, I don't know that your precinct has had them.
Yeah.
In, in certain areas, like Commissioner Arthur was saying, they're useful when the school district asks for the county to weigh in on certain issues. I've seen the county assist via in our local agreements on parking lots. You know, things that are safety issues for the schools and for the kids and the school buses, that kind of thing.
I, I just, I just think, you know, if we have it for one or more, we should have it for them all, right? To get the same, you know, the same.
Benefit.
Uniformity.
That's, that's, that's your priority when your precinct, if you want to do it. I've got, I've got them. And if, if a specific project comes up, I'll bring it before the court.
Okay. Yes.
Or, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
All right. I understand. I'm just, we're trying to figure it out. If we don't all have them. Why don't we and why should, why shouldn't we?
Yeah. Well, no, no, there's certainly, if, in order to do a specific project, you actually have to have two in our local agreements. One is this one, which is very general.
Okay.
And then the, the second one would be the project-specific interlocal. And so to even do, do one, if you think you might have a project in the year, it's good to go ahead and do it generally.
It was just the first time it's come up in ten months. So, okay, thank you.
I'm pretty sure we had interlocals with Dave last year.
Okay.
Certainly with City of Dayton.
Yeah. So we have the city. I know we have the city. I have not seen the, and I thought I've looked at all the interlocals, so I don't recall seeing one. But I will check into it. Thank you.
All right. So we got a motion and a second. I believe the discussion is complete. Call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-six from Ms. Harris over at the Treasurer's Office. Consider and approve longevity pay. Be paid on Wednesday, November twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, for years of service as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Okay, Kim?
Yes, sir. I believe you have the register in your packets. And the rates we will be using are those that were approved by Commissioner's Court on, for your signature judges, July ninth of twenty twenty-four. So.
Y'all want longevity pay?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Gerald. Need a second. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight-seven from Lime Barker. Our tax attorneys consider and approve resale bids requested by Cleveland I S D as follows. Mr. Rogers. Property ID four nine two six nine. Bid amount is ninety-eight hundred dollars.
As always, I try to look at these things. This is a pretty good amount that we're receiving on this. The market value on this property from C A D is only twelve thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, and we're receiving ninety-eight hundred. So I'm definitely making a motion to approve this.
Motion from Bruce. Second from David. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll agree with Bruce on his comments. But I think it's for more than ninety-eight hundred dollars. Because if, if you, this is what I read. Somebody tell me if I'm wrong. It's to pay that amount plus the calendar years twenty-three, twenty-four, and obviously twenty-five. No?
Good morning. It's actually, you know, what it is, is it's not twenty-five, it's twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, so, so that's included in the ninety-eight hundred?
No, the ninety-eight hundred, they just agreed if the bid is accepted, they'll go ahead and pay the taxes.
Okay, so it's not ninety-eight plus those two years' worth of taxes? Okay, so it's a little bit more than that. So it's even a better deal than what Bruce described?
And if I may add, the bid is actually, I think it was incorrect on the agenda, it's nine thousand, one hundred and eighty.
Okay. Even better.
We'll always take an improvement.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we have a motion from Bruce, a second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So that motion carries. Hey, Lee, you got the lead number right?
Yes, I did.
Number eight-eight for me is consider and approve Liberty County votes for the position of the Director of Liberty County Special Appraisal District Board for a four-year term from twenty-six to twenty-nine. And, uh, in our voting entitlement, we have one thousand, five hundred and ninety-four votes. And this year, we had two that were expiring. But they checked to see if they wanted to be re-up for election, reelection. Jimmy Rollins and Mark Schellander. So my proposal to you is to split the votes between those two gentlemen and approve. If so, that's the court's feeling.
Make a motion to approve.
Jimmy Schellander, and who was the other one?
It's only two that are up for reelection.
Jimmy Rollins and Mark.
Mark Schellander, Jimmy Rollins.
Jimmy Rollins.
Yeah. There's a motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Okay. Got it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay. So thank you, gentlemen. Need to get that done. It has to be turned in prior to December fifteenth.
And the county has the largest block vote, so.
We do. It, uh, but sometimes there's more that are on the consideration, so you have to cut them a little bit more. But we do have the, the largest number of votes and just for the public's interest. Cleveland I S D has a thousand, one hundred and eight votes, and Dayton I S D has eight hundred and seventy-four. The next largest down the list would be Liberty I S D with three hundred and thirteen. So you would think that some of the cities would be way up there, but they're not. Considering, you know, Dever's I S D has forty-eight votes, Old Days Etta has seventy, Ames has ten. You look at the city of Dayton with two hundred and forty-four, and the city of Cleveland, one fifty-six. So there's not really, you know, it's gonna be the, the I S Ds and us that mostly.
I recall that from the old Dayton I S D board. But I also recall that it was second in the county to, second to the county, and now Cleveland has leapfrogged it in in the number of votes. So go show you the growth up there.
I was looking at some of the schools that might move up to six A next year. None in Liberty County, but I think Marvers Hill will move up to six A next year.
Yeah.
So does that tell you what's, it's growing everywhere. Okay. All right. Moving on to eight, item eight-nine from Judge Fuller, precinct six. JP consider and approve the purchase and installation of flooring for the JP Clerk's Office and Mel Room for a total cost of two thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and fifty cents. The quote is included in the packet. Bruce, let me hear from you on that one.
Yeah, because I haven't heard anything from this. I've talked with Maintenance Department. They haven't brought this through Maintenance Department. I don't know whether it's went through purchasing agent. This is, we're gonna have to basically stop this repairs that don't go through the proper channels. Right now, I'd like to make a motion to table this.
Okay. I'll second that.
All right, got a motion from Bruce. Second from Gerald to table. Now, remember, if we table, we need to bring it back up on the next court, so hopefully we can get our information in by then. Okay? Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay.
I'm not saying it doesn't need to be done. I'm just saying the Maintenance Department.
Little bit of investigation. Yeah. Item number eight-ten from Sheriff. Consider and approve awarding certificate pay for correctional officers as follows. Now, y'all, remember, we pay law enforcement officers, but we don't pay correctional officers. And there was only one consideration years ago that we did this. But Sheriff, you're asking for fifty dollars a month for intermediate, seventy-five a month for advanced, and master is a hundred dollars a month. And yes, there was a line item certificate pay was approved back in the twenty-twenty-six budget. That's true. But it was, goes further back than that. Okay? I believe when Anne Marie was moved from the Sheriff's Department. Or.
We had.
She had, she was receiving certificate pay.
No, not Anne Marie.
Not Anne Marie?
No, we had this, the lady that was receiving certificate pay. That's why I was gonna say it was approved for her to receive certificate pay on the budget starting in twenty-three. And we had, uh, this, I'll get her name right here in just a second. I had it out, I thought. And it was Ms. Guillory. Ms. Guillory start receiving certificate pay in October of twenty-three. It was approved in that budget year. She received it all the way up until this year when she resigned for correctional officers. It was, I accept the responsibility for assuming and for miscommunication because when I read the proposed budget this past year, it still had certificate pay. Ms. Guillory had not, didn't relieve yet or resign. And so I thought it was gonna carry over, and then it was approved. The eighteen hundred was approved. And I assumed that we had the three people that we're gonna get at, one intermediate, one advanced, and one master, that it would carry over. I also had a misunderstanding with the Treasurer's Office because the correctional officers were not to get what the law enforcement officers did. And so they were gonna stay at the fifty, seventy-five, with the hundred. And so I thought everything was fine until last Commissioner's Court when it didn't. So I was trying to clear up that. It's in the budget. We've got line item. We could transfer over to make it up because we do have one advanced, one intermediate, and one master. And like I said, it's proposed, it's in the budget. The line item is there.
Well, there is line item.
And I, I know Angela and Dwayne are swamped, as you know, at budget time with everybody requesting everything. I just assumed since it was in the proposed budget, it was accepted, that that applied. So the money's there, and I know Dwayne would like to take it for maybe the JP bill.
Dwayne just smiled. Dwayne just smiled. He rarely smiles.
I know. But they have been, CO, this, these COs are never been, Ms. Guillory was never with the Sheriff's Office deputies. She was always a correctional officer. The people that have got the certificates now are just correctional officers and have never been deputies. But I look for more to be doing that because we're really encouraging the schooling and everything to get them up so they get more hours and, and to gain.
Currently only have three people that would be.
Only have three. Yes, sir. That's, that's why I addressed the nine hundred shortfall, that we can transfer money from one line item to another to equal that money.
Can we move the money?
Well, the money is that he already has in his budget. All he's gonna do is move it from one line item to the other.
Correct.
It's not like we're getting any more money from the auditor.
It won't be, no money. I'm not asking for any extra money.
Yeah.
No, I understand that. I'm just waiting to hear from my auditor that, yes, we can move the money. Yes, okay. Got a motion from David. And there's about three seconds on that one, I believe. I'm thinking Greg was loudest that time, so. Second from Greg. Any further discussion?
So it's a legal line item transfer? Because this is, I mean, you know, our budgets for our people are separate from our operating budgets. So.
Yeah, he has to look.
Yes, it's a legal line item transfer.
Okay. That's all I needed. I needed to hear that. Thank you.
Got a motion, a second. Seems that all the discussion is complete. Call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nay.
Thank you. Judge, I promise not to be controversial anymore.
Bobby, that was really the easiest one you've had in a long time. Okay. All right. Item number eight-eleven from, which posted Ms. McCarty over in the county attorney's office. Consider and approve the appointment of Regina Jenkins as interim veteran in service. Consider and approve the appointment of Regina Jenkins as interim veteran services director of Liberty County, Texas, until a permanent replacement can be made by the commissioner's court. This came up because we have a grant that's outstanding, we need to get it serviced and get this grant approved, and we have to have someone in that position, so, uh, Ms. Jenkins, uh, is asked that the appointment be specifically limited to the duties solely required for the submission of the VCSO grant. I don't blame her, okay? And that the appointment automatically expires upon the successful submission of the grant or on the date the court designates for the grant-related responsibilities to conclude. So, that's pretty specific, Catherine?
Uh, Judge, I believe that you could make a motion under the noticed agenda item that allows for Ms. Jenkins to take that appointment for the purpose of applying for this annual grant. And that will.
It will serve the purpose what we need right now.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Now, the, I will say the committee is in the process of, um, searching for a replacement director. So hopefully that won't be too long now.
Okay. All right. Yeah. Okay, we have a motion, a second. And Ms. Jenkins is gonna take the responsibility until we get the grant taken care of or else until we relieve her or a new replacement, uh, is hired for the director for veteran services. Okay. Any further discussion? We don't have a motion yet. Okay, motion for Bruce.
Okay.
Second from Greg. Okay, any further discussion? One once, likewise. Okay, no further discussion, uh, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Eight, twelve, from, uh, Mr. Post and Ms. McCarty. Consider and approve the county attorney's office to send a notice of termination of contract to periwending for breach of contract by failing to provide the contracted services. Producer, mandatory, Matthew?
We'll handle this.
Catherine, okay?
Yes, I've actually been working with your office, Judge. Um, DeeDee and I have tackled this issue, uh, many times in the past, but it has come to our attention that our current vending machine, uh, contractor is not holding up their end of the contract. So, uh, we would ask for, uh, permission from my office to send a letter, um, noticing that contractor that they are in breach.
I have many, many complaints about the vending machines.
Perfect.
But didn't we just, we still have our last vendor's machines in storage?
That's, that has been brought to my attention as well.
Vendors, aren't we?
Well, we had some step up.
And, and I think in future, what would happen, I was, I would probably get with the purchasing department and, and we, um, maybe look for a, a service.
Make a motion to approve.
I'm sorry.
Motion from Bruce. Second from Greg. Gerald, you wanna add to that?
Oh, yes, of course. Everybody knows vending machines, no.
If you don't get your potato chips, it's gonna be something wrong.
My, my, it's more of a statement, but I've been through a situation like this before where I had a lot of folks counting on vending machines, and we went through a change, a contract change. And so in that period of time between someone being told that they're being let go, uh, until a new vendor, uh, is putting machines in place, there's a gap, a significant gap. And I don't know how many people utilize these vending machines here, but for me, it was a big problem, because I had several thousand people that depended on them, and they were not available, and it was a, it was a gigantic mess. And so we're not falling into that trap between the conclusion or terminating of a vending contract until we initiate someone else and they get their equipment, and, uh.
I don't believe now we do, because they've never been serviced properly anyway.
I, that, that's the thing, I, I don't think that they're stocked now, so there would be no difference.
Take three or four months, uh, to transition from the old to the new, and I guarantee you, once you send that letter, the old is not gonna do anything for you.
No, you're absolutely right, I just don't think that that would be much different than our current situation.
All right.
Okay.
I, I just put that as a warning that, yeah, if anybody's counting on vending, it's, there's gonna be a supply disruption.
Don't count on vending, count on Walmart.
I got you.
Okay. All right, motion from Bruce, second from Greg. I believe our discussion is complete. I believe it's complete. Okay, call for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Item eight, thirteen is from our fire marshal, uh, Nathan Green. Review and consider annual contract with the city of Cleveland for mutual aid, uh, contract for fire services in Liberty County. Uh, Andy, what you have today?
Y'all should have had a copy of it in the back of the book, but it was a standard contract that the county attorney and I had come up with, and they signed it and submitted it.
Well, that means they agree finally, so we're good.
Yeah, I believe we're approved.
Second.
Motion from Greg. Second from David. Any further discussion?
Yeah, is this, is this dollar amount consistent with the other large fire departments?
It's the same as it was last year, but, uh, didn't change.
It's two hundred thousand dollars, right? It's a, is that what we give to Dayton Volunteer Fire Department?
Yeah.
Is this a much bigger fire department?
I don't know that it's much bigger, uh, it is full-time paid, but that's the number that I would, I, I hit the word inherited when I got hired.
Okay.
They cover a lot of area out there where we don't have volunteer, but they, uh, some, uh, cover, that we don't have volunteer fire departments.
There are all around the, that part of the counties, and there are down in the Dayton area.
Okay, so this, this is justified, about, because I, I thought ours was a hundred thousand with the Dayton Volunteer Fire Department. When I looked at this one, I said, you know, I, I wanna know what the difference is, it's, it.
It's a lot more runs, it was a negotiated.
They contact, they, they cover areas where we don't have volunteer fire departments.
Okay.
And, uh.
Well, they cover the area that they incorporated with when they set up the fire department back in the day. So there's no part of the county that is not covered by a fire department, whether it be full-time, they go volunteer, and they are a combination paid and volunteer fire department, so.
Okay.
They are covering a large area.
But their coverage area is larger, and so it's commensurate with this more.
It is, it's, it's larger, uh, it can't give you the exact square miles, but they are more heavily populated.
What fire department covers the northwest part of the county up there, northwest of Cleveland?
Cleveland.
But, but that's not in the city, so that.
No, sir, it's not in the city.
So they are covered area where there's no volunteer fire department.
No, sir, that's, that's not necessarily correct, that is their territory, they only chose to put the paid personnel in the city limits. So it is still part of the Cleveland Fire Department's territory that was incorporated. They just, they pay personnel to be at the station to cover within the city limits twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
But it's still their area.
And it takes money to run it down.
How did it get to be their area?
They took it when they set up the Cleveland Volunteer Fire Department, and then they changed to a combination department and put in paid personnel just inside the city limits. Now they do respond outside the city limits with paid personnel, but they also have some volunteers.
Yeah.
That they try to count on, uh, outside the city, and when they go to other counties.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion from Greg, second from David, and no further discussion. Call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. And don't sit down yet, Nathan, you got one more. Consider, review and consider the annual contract with Cypress Lake Fire Department through September of twenty-twenty-six.
Just carry over from last commissioner's court, Commissioner Arthur had some questions, I believe those have been answered.
Yeah, well, he had some questions, uh, uh, about the amount of money, if we, I understand that, but I still would like, I know you're gonna monitor this very closely.
As I do, I will be doing.
Yes, uh, yeah, but this one, uh, I want this to be monitored closely, and I, I would like kind of continual reports on it, and if, if we, if they're not coming, meeting the standards or, uh, meeting our requirements, then I would like to be able to stop the payment.
Do we have that legal right after we sign this contract?
Though, the way that the contract is written. Oh, my apologies, uh, the way that the contract is written, uh, there is some, um, leeway on how the auditor can, um, make the payments to the volunteer fire departments. And so if the court so chooses to pay them monthly versus an lump sum, um, you can vote to do that.
Oh, it's, it's in the contract, the monthly payment.
Yeah, monthly payment.
It says you're vocal in the contract.
Good.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion. Motion from Bruce, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay.
That motion carries.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Andy. And y'all, please remember that there's still a burn ban ongoing. And, uh, what's our numbers right now? Andy, uh, right offhand, do you know with the, uh, KBDI?
We're over six thirty.
Over six thirty?
Average.
Yeah.
The wettest point is right under six hundred, the driest point is in the seven sixty, seven seventy range, max is eight hundred. So we are in a severe drought, although it may look wet in some areas, but as an average, which is the number we have to go by, we are well above severe drought status.
And what was that current amount, our number?
I had to check this morning, it doesn't update until nine, and I was already sitting here, but we are over six thirty. What is it, man?
Six forty-seven.
Six forty-seven.
Okay.
And the highest seven oh five.
Yeah.
Somebody got some rain somewhere, it was a fire, and it was dry.
And we normally always call it burn ban when it exceeds six hundred, so.
Right.
Yeah, okay. All right. Item number eight, fifteen, from Commissioner Arthur, considering and approve the appointment of Brett Odlet, Mark Neal, and Bill Wingfield to Liberty County EST number seven board of commissioners, beginning January the first, twenty-twenty-six, for two-year appointments. Okay.
These are just reappointments.
Reappointments. Okay.
I'll second.
Motion from Greg, second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, sixteen, from me. Uh, consider and approve the execution of a letter of approval for development of data center within Liberty County. Requester is Blue Magic LLC on behalf of their client, ESC of Utah. Execution this letter does not grant a variance or in any way allow the requester to forego the permitting process. Well, it's an opportunity that somebody wants to put, uh, a data center here, and y'all know what data centers are. If you don't, well, they're pretty big, and they're pretty demanding on power requirements, uh, water requirements and such, and they're quite sizable, uh, not just in acreage, but in the building itself. Uh, not sure exactly where this is gonna go, but I kinda have an idea, but I'm not gonna comment on that. This doesn't tell them, yeah, uh, we're gonna tell you, just go ahead and get accurate, it just says we're gonna look at it. Okay, that's the way I look at it, Matthew?
This does not obligate the county, uh, to grant any permits that are otherwise required under the law, so, um, they would still have to go through the permit, uh, process. This is largely symbolic. There's nothing we can do if they, uh, you know, satisfy all the requirements of the permits, there's nothing we can do to stop them. Uh, they just ask for a letter and, uh, it, I, I, I suggested to, uh, the court, or, or the judge, that if they want something signed like that, it needs to come from a commissioner's court, so.
Okay, what, what exactly is an off-grid data center?
Nick?
Anybody know? I mean, I can tell you what I think, but I don't think it.
I mean, I mean, that's, that's what their letter says, they're off-grid.
That's correct.
Are they gonna generate their own power to?
Probably, I mean, they may be tapping into solar or some type of clean energy, most likely, but it probably doesn't tie into the main grid.
It was natural gas.
Or something, they have some other form of.
If this is the same.
Well, there's three, three avenues they could go, there's natural gas, you could go with solar, they could go with energy, if energy could actually get out there. If there's a fourth one that sneaks in the back door, it's, it's gonna be hydrogen power, if they have the capability to convert hydrogen power to electricity. So there's actually four ways, and, uh, I'm sure they're entertaining all the above, but there it is, it's off-grid.
There's a, a bunch of data centers coming to Texas, so I wouldn't be surprised we, you're more about it.
They've been talking about going with geothermal.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and they're awesome.
Okay, so this, this obligates us in no way to anything, it's just the first step.
That's right, they, uh.
And they're not here to, and they're not here to discuss, so.
It's kind of an agreement for fair play.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, suppose so.
Okay, let's see the court, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce, second from David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nay. That motion carries, thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, seventeen, from Ms. McMillan over in Indian Health Care. Consider and approve the revised commissary jail medical charge sheet. Changes will take effect January first, twenty-sixth. These updated charges are comparable to surrounding counties. Penny, good to see you this morning.
Good morning, Judge.
Yeah.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, this is our annual, um, charge sheet update. We, we pretty much, um, look at these every year at the end of the year, and we look at the surrounding counties to make sure that our commissary charges are up to date with the surrounding counties. So, um, our medical department, um, does that painstakingly call, you know, that, uh, gets with the other jails and gets with their medical departments and finds out, you know, what are they charging for, uh, these medical, um, services? And then, um, she sends a report to me and to the sheriff and, uh, our warden, and we put it on court, and if y'all approve it, then we need to get it, uh, it'll be effective January first. So we have to give them thirty days' notice, uh, before we do this, so, um, we listed, I listed, um, per item, what the charges were, I mean, what they're currently are, and what they're gonna be going to effective January first, if y'all approve.
Okay, Dwayne, you have any concerns? Matthew, Catherine?
No, sir.
Gosh, I'll ask Kim then, Kim, do you have any concerns? I think so.
Thank you so much, we, we try, we try really hard.
Motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nay.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Number eight, eighteen, from Constable Tucker over in Precinct Two. Consider and approve the purchase of T-shirts, hoodies, and hats for Constable Precinct Two Office in the amount of one thousand twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents to be taken from their seizure funds. Constable, good to see you this morning.
Afternoon, good morning, Judge.
How's your garden growing?
Like a, like a champ.
All right, it looked good, it looked real good, thank you for doing that.
I like your pantry you got put up out there.
The.
Food.
Oh, yes, yeah, it got installed yesterday, yes, sir.
Okay, what you got, John?
So I brought for transparency some training shirts, hoodies, and hats that I ordered in for our deputies, uh, to be paid for out of our seizure fund.
Matthew, the concern?
It, 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 he's exactly right, uh, the constable in saying that it's for transparency, there's really, uh, nothing the court can do, uh, 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 assuming that it meets basic public purpose, and it does.
Well, if they submit a budget, they don't have to.
Oh, well, yeah, Dwayne's correct, um, if, if they submit a budget, I should say, I'm assuming, yeah, my, my response assumed to that, so maybe there are some issues, I'm not sure.
This, this isn't the first time we've done this, right? It's, it is for me, but not for the rest of the court.
No, that's true, yeah, approved, you know, seizure, purchase of maiden seizure, yeah, okay.
Oh, you said there's a reason we can't approve this?
You can or you can't, you can or you can or you cannot, I mean, there's your discretion on this.
Yeah.
Said we can or we cannot, it's our choice.
Said we can or we cannot, it's our choice.
Okay.
Whichever we want to do, there's nothing legally saying that we cannot do it.
Yeah, I, I don't see any issues, yeah. It is, I see no issues with, with y'all approving. It meets ba- basic public purpose requirements, it's money that he has, and yeah.
Because this could also be considered similar to uniforms, right?
It is, it has actually, training uniforms, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. Let's say the court.
I'm just going to clarify, it's not seizure funds, it's forfeiture funds.
Forfeiture funds.
Asset forfeiture.
The terms get used interchangeably and have certain technical meanings and other senses, yeah.
Yes, sir, so, so our, our day-to-day patrol uniforms, one are very expensive, one have a lot of gear. The secondary that we do, alert training, defensive tactics, classroom training, SWAT training, stuff like that, I don't want my guys to destroy thousands of dollars worth of gear. So I then bought summer and winter time clothing that they can wear for training purposes.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Yeah, a motion from Bruce. Second from David. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
I did interrupt the court, this is second, he needs to be excused about 30 minutes ago, he notified his wife he hit a deer on the bypass.
Oh, Lord.
Brand new car.
As long as she's okay. She is okay.
So if y'all want some deer sauce, then you can take her.
Yeah.
That's nothing over here doing, trying to keep it game.
John, you know where to bring it.
Yes, sir, you are.
Come on. Good luck.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, sir.
Okay. 819 from Mr. Post and Ms. McCarthy. Consider and approve holding a public auction to sell 18.8 acres, not 18,800 acres. Of the northerly 150 feet of a 300-foot wide strip of land is conveyed to Liberty County by instrument recorded at Liberty County Clerk's file number 2025018749, out of the Liberty County Solar Project LLC tract B pursuant to section 263.01 of the Texas Local Government Code. Okay. Want to make sure that's, y'all understand that's not 18,800 acres. I don't know who would have that, but 18.8 acres, okay?
Matthew, what's your take on this?
I'm sorry. We were still discussing other issues. Where are we at?
Item 19.
Yeah, so there, there are some aspects to this that would require me to give my advice in a closed session, considering it's dealing with real estate and valuation and, and that sort of strategy. So I, I would ask that we, I, I did not, we did not include an executive agenda item on this one, so I asked we table it and bring it back.
Make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Bruce. Second from Gerald. To table?
Yes, table.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Okay, 26, gotcha. Got a note, just slide in here for number 26.
So I guess it'll, there'll be enough time to get it on next week's agenda. That's correct.
Okay. Item number 820 from Mr. Post and Ms. McCarthy. Consider and approve publishing notice of public auction 20 days prior to the auction in a newspaper in Liberty County in which real property is located once a week for three consecutive weeks pursuant to Texas Local Government Code, section 263.001. And Matthew, I'm assuming that this pertains to the previous item on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to table it as well.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Gerald. Second by Bruce. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 821, County Attorneys. Consider and approve the amended agreement regarding subdivision rules and regulations for development between Liberty County and Calara Land LLC for residential development, which is Liberty Meadows, of a 122.04 acre tract of land located in Liberty County, Texas. Okay, Matthew or Catherine?
Judge, I would ask that we discuss this matter in executive session as it deals with a contract that's being negotiated.
Okay.
Number two.
It is number two on the executive session.
Okay, yes.
Okay, we'll move number 21 to executive session. And come back to that, okay. Number 22, 822, Mr. Post to discuss take action regarding request for variance from, for targeting trails subdivision located at County Road 3011 and County Road 3011A.
And this also has an executive session attached, I'd ask that we go into executive session first.
And that'd be item number three?
Yes, sir.
On executive session, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll come back to that one. And number 2823 from Mr. C. Consider and approve a payment applications, number 14 through 17, from White Construction, totaling an amount of $289,162 for the Northwest Annex Project.
Is this our final payment on this?
No, sir, actually, the guarantee match on price for the reconstruction of the annex was $4,677,000.
$711, I mean, sorry, 466, 4,667,000, $711, I'm so sorry. Our remaining balance after we pay these four payments will be 420,138.39. Then we'll be done.
Is this part of the schedule? Because I thought they were substantially complete and we're, we're moving in. Is it?
Well, when you're substantially complete, you can move in, but they're still not completely finalized with all the finishing touches.
Okay. But this was in a contractually agreed upon schedule of payments, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve. Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 824 from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve request for a holding tank for the temporary offices from 6C Fabrication for Kinder Morgan Pipeline. Holding tank will be serviced once a week. Contract is attached in the package for review, and Melinda, I believe we've done these before.
Yes, sir, we, we've done them for quite a few of the, the pipeline companies, because our office facilities are only temporary till it's built, and once it's completed, everything is removed, and I just bring it in front of y'all for transparency.
Yes, sir.
I believe it is. Yes, this one is endeavors.
Motion from Bruce. Second from David to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise nays.
I didn't want to talk about holding tanks.
I, I know.
Not especially this late.
But that's why I included the contract, this is going to be cleaned out weekly.
Okay, that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 825 from Ms. Soliday. Consider and approve River Ranch Phase Seven CLOMR review. Attached four-year review is LJ Engineering's third submittal. No objection to the CLOMR for the site as currently documented, provided that the project is not substantially modified from the current presented design. Any previous comments have been addressed. Melinda?
For those of you who don't know, the CLOMR stands for conditional letter of map revision, and this is their third review that they've done on this individual one. I have to sign off on these once they've been approved by LJ, but I'd like to bring them for you in front of y'all to see them.
Yes.
So everything was addressed? I know they have it highlighted in blue here in the letter, and they have no objections, it meets all the legal requirements.
Hannah Chamberlain from LJ, she's our plugman review, and she does all of these and sends a letter, yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion and we approve.
Second.
Motion from Gerald, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Melinda. Number 826 from JP5 Wade Brown. Judge Brown is asking us to consider and approve the request from JP Precinct Five to schedule Texas Security Shreddings Services, say it passed, for the secure disposal of AOL and outdated boxes of documents. These records have been reviewed, identified for destruction in accordance with the established records retention schedule. Instead of disposal of AOL, it's disposal of old outdated boxes. Okay, not AOL, America Online, no, I don't believe so. Anyway. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Bruce.
Second.
Second from David. Any further discussion?
I'd like to ask, what, what is the cost? It's not in here, it wasn't listed, to do the shredding, because usually it's, it's quite expensive to get one of those trucks out to do that, and you, usually, then you'll network with other agencies and all to utilize the truck for the day or whatever, so does anybody know what this costs? I, I can't, I can't approve something, I don't know what it's going to cost.
Well, I can tell you, I've done it before, had special shredding, they'll come do a special shredding above and beyond a regular contract we deal with the county, and it was about $200. It's not a huge amount, but it is about $200. That's what I spent.
We still don't have a quote on it. I don't see how Commissioner's Court can take action at this time. So if they just send it, I'm sure we could address it.
I'll ask them to think of it next week.
Okay.
I withdraw my motion.
I think it goes per box.
You can change your motion to the table.
Per box.
Make a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, motion from Bruce, second from David to table.
Thank you, Gerald.
Any further discussion?
Sorry, I didn't.
If this is the only way that we can legally destroy documents, isn't it? Matthew?
I'm sorry, sir.
This is the only way that we can legally dispose of public records, isn't it?
Yeah.
According to what's in your document retention schedule and policy, then, yes, yeah, you generally have to shred most everything. There, it depends on how it's classified, too. I want to say that there, unless legal, yeah.
Well, that's, I mean, that, this is all done by a retention schedule by the library and how long we keep them, but the JPs do things similar to we do, they deal with credit cards, they deal with, you know, personal data, and that should absolutely be shredded, we should not be throwing that in the trash can.
Absolutely, right. But do we, do we schedule shredding days through the, throughout the county?
We have a regular truck that comes through and picks up our documents for shredding, and they shred them right out the street, right over here.
Does all offices around here know about that?
I think so, they put them in the bins, so.
Yeah. Every office has a specific bin for them.
Yeah, when, when we were doing it, that one time, we were going beyond the bin amount, so I had to pay extra for them to come in and get, and we were actually destroying a bunch of old books and stuff, so it was a special deal that we did that one time, but it wasn't excessive, it was about $200. But we do have regular shredding services that, and we have bins kind of back in the attic area where people put their, their documents.
If we contracted with a, with a vending company, we could just call them that way.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, call them up, and they'll tell you how much it costed.
Right.
Get a P.O., but we have a regular company, we do shredding services.
Well, for our purposes today, we're requesting to table.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. All right. We have an executive session scheduled. Looks like there's three items, all will be under the section 551.071 of Texas Government Code, which is consultation with attorney. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to second, move into executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session, second.
Got a motion, Bruce, a second from David. Further discussion?
I'm, I'm voting.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Sorry.
Bring it to executive session. It's now 11:24. AM, and we're out of executive session, back in regular session. Had two items for this discussion. Item number 21. Consider and approve the amended agreement regarding subdivision rules and regulations for development between Liberty County and Calara Land LLC for residential development Liberty Meadows of a 122.04 acre tract of land be located in Liberty County, Texas. Okay. What is the court's measure?
Make a motion to approve the amended agreement.
I'll second it.
Got a motion from Bruce. Second from Gerald. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that, that'll pass. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to item number 22. It's a discuss take action regarding request for variance for targeting trails subdivision located at County Road 3011 and County Road 3011A. Let's say the court.
Your Honor, I'd like to make the motion that we deny the variance request for targeting trails.
Second.
Got a motion from Gerald. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. And Matthew, I don't need to re, bring up the other, correct, that was just a discussion item.
That's correct, yeah, it was just information, yeah.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yeah, a motion that, from Bruce, and as always from David. And it is now 11:26 AM, and we are adjourned.